All right, we want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know it's a little blustery out there, but it's fall. We all love that. So we will now open the city council for Estacada. And if you'll please join me in the wonderful allegiance. Cindy, can I have roll call, please?
Councilor Dunsmir. Councilor Gates.
Here.
Councilor Hughes.
Here.
Councilor Littkey.
Here.
Councilor Strobel.
Here.
Councilor Ten Bush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwings.
Here, thank you very much, Seid. We are at the first citizen and community group comments. I don't have in front of me any, are there any over there on the, okay. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda. Are there any questions to the minutes or anything that might be on the consent agenda at this point? Okay, I'll need a motion for the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And the first and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. Thank you. Okay, we're at department committee reports and we'll start off, this is a few different ones tonight, so I'm just going to start off with the first one on the left. And I have Parks and Rec Commission. Is there anybody speaking on behalf of Parks and Rec?
Brent would be here for that, so maybe he's running late.
Okay, so just go on with the rest.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we will go with the downtown Estacada Commission. Next on the list. Okay.
Sorry, like somehow got dropped from the meeting there, but here we are. Well, good evening, everyone. So it's good to see you guys again. Um, so last I saw you, or since I last saw you, the D C, D E C has been hard at work. hashing out a strategic plan for the Main Street program. And this effort has largely been led by Commissioner Bennett Johnson, and we're grateful for her background in business consulting. So the Main Street program is still in draft form at this point, but we're very close to finalizing our goals for 2022 and beyond. And my hope is to share the plan with you during our next quarterly report. And our goals within the plan are sort of defined. Sorry, the, the plan is, is focused on fulfilling the four points laid out by like Main Street America. Which focus on economic vitality, design, organization, and promotions. And so we've currently built out our action steps for our promotion goal, which is to complete a comprehensive marketing plan for the downtown core. And one of our initiatives within the marketing plan is developing a passport program. Which is designed to get people like walking through the doors of our downtown business, or excuse me, businesses. And the generally idea is for folks to, they'll get ahold of this physical passport. And it will list the businesses that want to participate in the passport program. And each person will go around to those businesses, get a stamp from each business, kind of on their own timetable. And once they've gotten all the stamps for all of the businesses, they'll then turn that passport in for a prize. So we're busy working out the logistics and the budget for that with the goal of launching the program before Small Business Saturday. Our events and promotion subcommittee just met to discuss our plan for 2022 and what events we might want to host. So other than the Fourth of July parade, we don't have anything scheduled on the calendar yet. But we're definitely eager to get back into events for 2022, since we've been so quiet the last two years. So we're just busy brainstorming those. Other than that, just working on finalizing the plan so we can present it to you guys and start. Like actually get going on making things happen for the D E C, so. That's the report and I just want to thank you guys all for everything that you do for our city.
Well, thank you. That was very informative. We appreciate that. Are there any questions for her before we? Go on to the next one? Anybody? No? Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, moving right along, we are now at the library board.
Yeah, and I'm bringing Connie Redmond.
Okay, great, thank you.
Seid, this is Connie. Did you, I got disconnected for a minute. Am I on?
You are on Connie, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'll try and be quick, but there is a lot going on with the, the library. We have had an increase in checkouts in computer usage. We had a brick sale that the money will be used to go towards furnishing the new community building. And we sold fifty-nine bricks. We have been working for several months on trying to get the. The overhead lighting upgraded with LED lamps and that got accomplished this last month. For a cost of $7,073, which was about $2,000 than what we had anticipated we'd have to spend. The library has partnered with Med Project of Oregon for an unused prescription drug mailbox, mail back disposal project. The library offers prepaid mailing envelopes to the public. The library is a pickup location for the Make a Splash Children's Rain Boot Program. A giveaway of kids' rain boots to income qualified families. The library will host a walkthrough Day of the Dead program on this coming Saturday. And that includes take and make crafts, a photo booth, community resources, and book giveaways. This is a partnership between Ant Farm, Totos Juntos, and the library. But the, the biggest thing that we really, well, that Michelle and her staff recently accomplished is. They, Michelle wrote a grant to. Try and get a bookmobile for Estacada and we were awarded the grant. I think we're the only library in Clackamas County that either applied, but the only ones that actually got the grant. And this is a hundred and $2,000 grant. It was for more than just the van, but that was the main thing that came through. And, you know, we used to call them bookmobiles and that's the easiest way to identify it. And it's going to be used to connect more of the community and maybe outline areas. Underserved groups, she'll go to schools. It's really quite an accomplishment by Michelle and her staff to get this. They, they really put a lot of effort, did a great write-up for the grant and we got it. Right now is at, oh, I forget where the place is, but it's being outfitted. It's going to have all kinds of goodies on the inside, so that's exciting. Let's see, what else? I was recently stepped back from the library district advisory committee. And Desiree Fleck is overtaking that position for me and I appreciate that. And I, I think that's it, but I just want to again, just talk about Michelle and her staff and what a great job they do for our community. All the stuff that I just rattled off is, is due to their effort to connect with the community and do the best that they can for us. And I appreciate them tremendously. I want to thank the city council for their support of the library and also Paul Strobel, who is our liaison for coming to our meetings. And if you haven't been to the library lately, I hope you go. It's fabulous.
All right, thank you Connie, I appreciate that. Any questions for Connie before we move on?
Nope, nothing. Thanks Connie.
All right, next I have the arts commission.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yours commission held a retreat in September and we laid out a slate of quarterly events that will go throughout the year. I'm just going to go through some of the things that we're looking at. For winter, we're going to have, we're going to have snowflake templates that we'll try to hand out for children to decorate. With the idea that they could be used in businesses or homes or in, in city hall is, is winter decorations. An idea that we're looking at that I think would be a lot of fun is something called One Page Wednesday. And this would consist of inviting some established authors to an event where they would read from some, some papers. To be followed by an open mic for anybody that wants to participate and throw their name in a, in a fishbowl and pull them out, if you like, maybe ten people or so. And the idea is to let the invited authors have three pages to read. And then the, the people that are participating in the open mic to have one page to read. And what they could read anything they want, as long as it would fit on one sheet of paper. You could write it in the tiniest print they want. But the idea is just as restricted to one sheet of paper. So if somebody comes with a phone and they want to just keep scrolling and scrolling and scrolling, we'll give them a piece of paper. Just write it out on the paper. And, and the places we're looking at doing this would be include Clackamas County Rowers, the Harmony Bakery in the library. And when we do the one at the library, we would specifically want to open it up to like junior high and high school age. At the other places would serve alcohol, so that would not be appropriate to have kids there for that. That would be a quarterly thing we would do, so we'd cycle through the three different places. So every quarter we go through, each place would have a slide every quarter. The things we're looking at for spring is a coloring contest. A photo contest, which might end up more being like just a photo. Display where people could contribute photographs to put on display. There's a World Collage Day event coming up in May and we invite people to participate in that. For summer, we're looking at Art in the Park, which would be something, it could be something like a art fair or an art show. To be accompanied by children's art activities. We're also looking at a repeat of the chalk walk, which was a lot of fun last year and had a great deal of participation. And an art, art slash music crawl, where we'd be, bring back the music crawls that we've done in years past, but also include maybe art displays or art sales. Other things that are kind of ongoing is the one percent for art, we've got Nicole McMerrick looking at some of the one percent for art opportunities. And we want to, we want to keep moving forward with that. We're looking at a map of public art. And that entailed a discussion of what exactly is public art. So we, I don't know if we quite figured that out yet. But I think it's pretty much anything that like for the one percent for art and the murals and things like that. And the library display, we've. There from previous library displays, there are a lot of damage to the wall from pounding in nails and removing them and patching and. Years of that led to some stuff that needed to be repaired. The repair has been done. The next portion is to get some kind of a display system so that we can continue to have art displays in the library without damaging the wall. We're looking forward to collaborations with Ant Farm and Parks and Recreation and other groups. I think there's a lot of chance to. Join our energies together to do some pretty spectacular things for Estacada. Any questions?
Question?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next I have. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
You don't travel solo.
I'm Erin Smith and I'll let these two introduce themselves.
I'm Shannon Stout.
Jenny Strickland.
We are three of the D E I C members. And we have spent the last quarter doing a lot of planning. I think we did some goal setting for the year. And one of our big goals was to adopt an equity lens tool that we could use and we did, so check on that one. So we have a pilot equity lens and our first project with that is we are doing an assessment of the. City recruitment process for committees. So we're going to go through that, hopefully come up with some recommendations. And bring that to this group to, you know, hear those recommendations and see if you would like to act on any of those. We also are working on a D E I one oh one type session that. We are going to watch together, but we're also going to invite city council and some representation from all of the city committees to come and take part in that webinar and. Discuss what it means to us. Any other items? To add? I think we definitely just want to thank Councilor Ten Bush and Taryn and Taylor for all of their work in keeping us moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions?
All right, we're back up to Parks. Do we have anybody? No? Okay, great. We thank all of you tonight for coming out and kind of giving us some informative information about what you're up to. We appreciate it. And it's great to hear all these new things going on, so we appreciate you and everything you do, so thank you. We're going to move on to the Clackamas County Sheriff's Report. So Marcus, I think you're there.
I am, can you hear me okay?
You sure can, thank you.
You bet. Well, this is my first, first meeting here at Estacada. Just briefly say that I'm, I'm happy about this opportunity and, and. With the recent retirement of Lieutenant Colius, I'll be replacing him in Estacada. Just a little bit about myself, I'm currently the Evening Watch Commander at the sheriff's office, responsible for our. Fourth and first shifts, our swing shift and our graveyard shift, and then also have assumed the, the responsibilities out here in Estacada. My. Previous position at the sheriff's office was as the Public Information Officer and, and then patrol prior to that. I believe that, I believe that you did get a copy of the recent statistics for the city of Estacada that covers September. And I'm just, just reviewed those. What I did notice is actually kind of a significant increase in activity for the month of September. As compared to the, the previous six months, I just kind of looked back to see what had occurred prior to that. Nothing really. Of note of, of why, other than there was, there was an increase in dispatch calls and an increase of self-initiated activity and really what that shows me is that. You know, the deputies were out there working and, and in their, in their downtime, they're also out there. Looking for other activities that that might be happening within the city. And that was pretty evenly split between the, the contract deputies and county deputies doing work within the city. Significant increases on that were, were traffic stops and suspicious vehicles. And then also for dispatch calls, it looked like there's an increase in suspicious vehicles. And alarms seem to have doubled. Twenty, where I think there's kind of an average about ten a month, so those were, those were your increases there. I did confirm for the, the city manager that the sheriff's office does have a request, or excuse me, the city of Estacada has a request with the sheriff's office to increase the F T E. For Estacada deputies by one. The, the chief deputy has that request on his desk. He confirmed that he does have that. I don't have. A timeframe of when that will be available or when that will happen, but I'll, I'll report that back when I do have that information. And. Oh, it's kind of interesting. There was, there was a, there's a detour Northwest Wade Street that, that's taking traffic past River Mill. Elementary school and there were some concerns of traffic problems in the area. So the city assistant manager had reached out and been working with our. New S R O Deputy Olson, they put out a Facebook post on that and. Essentially, we're telling people that we would do extra patrols and watch for traffic violations in the school zones, speeding and, and stop sign violations. It seemed to. Strike a nerve with, with some people in the area, so we're definitely going to pay attention to that. And then in the future, if, if. You know, I'm open for questions and if there's anything that you would like me to research and present on, any information you wanted me to bring to the board, I'd be happy to do that.
Any questions?
No.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So looking here, it says the total calls sixty-nine percent. Was responded to by other units and only thirty-one percent by Estacada units. Do, I mean, is, do we need to revisit the, the times that we have? The units in town so that we can get our, you know, our Estacada units or does it even, does it even really matter? I mean, we're. But it just looks like a huge discrepancy in, you know, other units to the Estacada unit. You know, do we need to revisit the times that we have these deputies in town or is it just going to be the same, you know, regardless?
Yeah, that's a, that's a fair question. I did discuss that with the city manager. A week or so ago, and I think that no matter, looking at it really, the slow times are, are in the early morning graveyard hours, early morning hours. I'm, I'm not, I'm not certain that adjusting those hours would necessarily give you any benefit at this point. What would be beneficial is when that additional F T comes on is maybe. Giving yourself broader coverage throughout the day. I think that would, that would help with it, but with just, with just the one shift, I don't think that you would really go either direction and, and capture any more of those calls. It seems to be pretty evenly spread out.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Just, just curious, we've got the request in for one F T E. What's, what's involved in that beyond just putting in a request?
That's a good question. I don't have the full answer to that, but if I. From the sheriff's office standpoint is, you know, we'll need to. Hire a deputy, have that person trained and then have them assigned to the city, which could take some time, just. Across the board and in law enforcement, hiring right now is something somewhat of a challenge. We are. You know, we've got the, the pedal to the floor on that and, and working on that throughout the sheriff's office. So it's just a matter of, of. Waiting for the staffing to be to the point where we could get another deputy to Estacada. So the timing wise, I'm not sure, as far as the. You know, the finance and the logistics part, I think I would probably refer you to the center, city manager on that. I think she has probably a better handle on what that process has been in the past.
Thank you.
Oh, Joel?
Yeah. Hey, thank you for joining us tonight, Lieutenant.
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, we have one officer that we requested and we currently only have what, one F T officer that we have assigned to Estacada at this time, correct?
There's, there's one, one full-time and one that's three-quarter. So one point seven five and then the S R O as well, so a total of two point seven five.
Yeah, yeah.
So my question is adding one officer, is that going to be able to balance this out to give us a twenty-four hour coverage in Estacada or will we still be lacking?
That, that will not be twenty-four hour coverage. There was also a, a request to increase that point seven five to a full-time position, so that would then be the. Three full-time, but, but that wouldn't be enough for, for twenty-four hour coverage.
So what would it take to get us there? Because that's what a lot of the requests and, and I've been hearing lately around town is, you know, how do we get twenty-four hour coverage from? You know, that's what citizens are asking. So what, what, what would it take? And do you think, you know, the three officers, officers with our growth and the rise that we've been seeing in crime recently? Is that going to be a sufficient, a sufficient level of officers here and I think was the average eighteen months to get an officer out here after training and everything? Or do you think that we need to really consider looking at more than just one request of an F T E?
Yeah, I, to get to twenty-four hour coverage. That would be a significant jump. I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that, what that looks like, because there's other factors other than just covering twenty-four hours, other factors for. Time off vacation and, and whatnot, so you probably want slightly above that. But we could, I could definitely look into that and get back to you, you know, with a fairly. Close answer.
I think the second. Go ahead.
I'm sorry?
I'd say the second half of that question would be that if you give back to us is. Would this, looking eighteen months out, would three F Ts be sufficient for the right, for the rate that the crime is increasing and the population is increasing? That's my curiosity because I hate to get eighteen months off and now I realize we needed, you know, four, and then wait away another, you know, eighteen months. And so I just want to make sure that we're, based on your guys', your guys' analysis, that we're actually going to be sufficient to curb the rising crime we've been seeing lately, so.
Sure. No, absolutely. I'll, I will, I will definitely get back to you on that at the next meeting if that's appropriate. And. I'll have some, some harder numbers for you and, and on what you're looking at.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other question?
I got one, just kind of a follow-up as, from Councilor Littkey's question. Do you, what, what role does Clackamas County play in the sheriff's department in, in determining? The appropriate coverage for a town of our size with the growth that we're seeing with the, whatever activity we're seeing as well too? Do you have a recommendation for the number of F Ts that would be ideal for Estacada? And you can get back to us as well on that too.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I will. And I think my role in that would be as making a recommendation. And what I would want to do is to go back and look at, at your historical data for calls for service, response times, population. And I could probably prepare something for you as a suggestion and let you guys take a look at it to make a decision on that. As, as it stands right now, looking, I, I did look back at the previous six months for the monthly statistics. And it, it's pretty, it's, it's fairly consistent. I think Counselor Littkey was pointing out, it's fairly consistent that. Roughly half or maybe more, your calls for service are actually be handled by the sheriff's office because of the, the lack of twenty-four hour coverage from an Estacada deputy. So you are, you are seeing. Would it say more work than you have workers? For sure, so we can, we can definitely take a look at that and, and get you some numbers.
Great. All right, any other question? No, Marcus, we thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out tonight and giving us a little. History there and telling us where we're at. We, we need that.
Yeah.
We're growing fast and things are happening, so.
Absolutely, yeah, glad to be here, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving on to the city manager's report.
Yeah, so just an update on Wade Creek Park Phase Three, they have the bottom of the Culverton. They're hoping to have that road back opened up in two weeks, so this weekend, next week. I don't know what condition it will be opened up because paving in the rain, it just depends. So it might be gravel for a while or plates, but hopefully it'll be open. As you all kind of know, the C M search has started, city manager search. You should have all received invites for personal interviews to get back to the company to get those set up. Our November eighth meeting, we're going to have an urban renewal meeting before the meeting to discuss Main Street. And a couple other things, some grants I think that, that may be coming up. We'll also have Kurt here to talk about the wastewater treatment plant a little bit more and answer some of those questions that we had at the last meeting. It won't be our last meeting covering this, but we'll slowly get it all worked out and come to a decision. I'm, on November fifteenth, we need to have a special meeting to approve the city manager profile to be able to stay on the target deadline of having a city manager by February. So on November fifteenth, we'll, and that usually is a very short meeting because. He takes into account everything that everyone has said and then you look at it and. And that sets up the profile so they can get the advertisement out for the city manager search. But also that night, since that will be short and we'll have you all together, we thought that night we would also have your marijuana workshop. Where you discuss all the information that we have gathered. For the citing of marijuana dispensaries in the city. So we can look at all that information from online surveys, Waterville surveys, the town hall, online town halls. We'll get all that information to you and we can kind of start discussing that and see and if there needs to be some change. On where we cite those things at. And then we don't have a meeting on November twenty-second. It's the week of Thanksgiving. We normally take that off, so the fifteenth is gonna kind of replace that. And the fifteenth meeting will start at seven o'clock. It won't be an early meeting. We'll just go ahead and start at seven. We'll start with a special meeting and then we'll go into the workshop. Um, and I just wanted to let you know, the message board sign should be going in here within the next couple of weeks over here. The, so, um, you know, hopefully that'll be there and we can, the sign out there is getting old. And it probably will replace that sign because that one's about ready to fall down the Timber Park sign. So, but, uh, we, they came out and kind of demonstrated it so we could pick out what. Lumens we wanted or whatever, so it should be getting up pretty soon. And I think that's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Any questions for?
Um, so I, I had a proposition I wanted to put, put out here. After actually trying to think about it. Since for our last time we went through and we selected our, our position to select the city manager. We have a perfectly talented and capable city assistant city manager sitting right there. That might be able to save our city ten to thousands of dollars if we would take into consideration to possibly. Speak to Melanie about maybe taking over the city manager position. She's been, been here for many, many years, gone through many city managers. She's experienced, she knows her location. She knows, you know, what we do, how we do it. She's had a lot of training, a lot of experience, and so I think it's something rather that we should consider possibly. To rather go through months and months of work and interviews and, and everything else. Try to look in-house real quick and see if something that she might be interested in. So before we continue on with the. Current path of trying to find a city manager from outside. So I wanted to put that out there and see what the council thought. I thought it might be a good, good opportunity for us to reward Melanie for, for our work over the years. You know, and be a chance to promote her, so. I don't know if I'm wording everything right there. I vibrated a little Friday today, one sec. But I just thought the Melanie might be a good, good option for us to review before we go down this long path with the, um, with the recruiting company. So. I want to see what you thought of that one.
No, I think that'd be a question.
Well, we, we've already signed a contract and started the process with the company. I will say publicly, because I don't, Melanie is not even sure if she's going to apply. She hasn't made that decision yet. It, it is a consideration, but she just hasn't made that decision yet. So I know she would like to move forward with this and, and if she does decide to apply. And she is the most qualified person candidate, she certainly would want it if she applied. But right now she's not even definite that she's going to apply, so. Because we have already signed a contract and started, but this is definitely something that in your personal interviews with them. That you, you know, might throw out that you do feel like there may be some staff, you know, on staff already that could be.
It's actually, it's actually one of the questions that they ask.
Yeah.
That is one of the questions that they ask. I, Joel, I went through my interview with them today. And it was a delight. It was, it was a great interview, lots of great information. But yeah, that is, that is one of the first questions that they asked us, uh, you know, in-house staff or anybody even outside of. City staff, but in the local area, so, but it is one of the questions that they asked.
All right. So definitely bring that up in your. Well, they'll ask it so that you can have that discussion, right?
And then Denise, this week we are ramping up the recycle or the, the garbage.
Yeah, the, so the, yes, this is the last week for the. Trap, uh, what's it called?
Yard debris.
Yard debris. The yard, yeah, recycling out there.
Any thoughts on that? Has that been working?
It, it, it's working. I think that, I think we're, we're gonna be talking with the companies to see how it would logistically be to, to go ahead and start it. Maybe not picking up weekly with your, your, they have to have a different truck pickup. Trap, should pick up yard debris because they can't have any trash in it. So maybe like, um, pick, having the containers but picking up for everyone on the same day, maybe twice a month. Or something. So we're gonna look at different possibilities with them. Because I don't think it's feasible to do it every, you know, every Thursday, have a whole other truck come out. But if we can do something like that, because it's definitely being used, we don't know if it's only being used by city residents. Who is the ones paying for it, but it with herb side, we would know that.
Yeah.
Who was doing that. So yeah, it's been successful though.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
Any other question? Okay, thank you Denise. All right, we are moving on to council business. The first on council business is housing needs analysis update.
And Matt is here.
And he's here and we're ready for him, so there you go.
Update us. And Taylor is here also.
All right, Taylor.
Hello. Um, and I believe I'm gonna be sharing my screen in order to show the PowerPoint. Should I go ahead and?
Sure, and I think you could skip the first couple of slides and go straight to the, kind of the flowchart one.
Okay.
If you open the, yeah, the presentation that we did for the tech. And you want to give me any kind of intro or should I just go for it?
Go right ahead and have your.
Yeah, sure. So, um, I'll give you an intro and just say hi, everybody. So Matt Hasty here is the, uh, project consultant from Angelo Planning Group. The project manager from the team at Angelo Planning. That is helping us with this project as well as. Or in cooperation with the Johnson Economics. And so, yeah, we're lucky to have you in person there tonight and I'm sorry I couldn't join you. So we just wanted to provide a briefing on where we're at in the project, what we've done so far, some preliminary. Findings, initial findings, and then also give you all an opportunity to. Yeah, uh, you know, get a first look at and maybe talk through the menu of housing strategies, which we'll get to. In a moment, so I think I'll just hand it over to you, Matt, if you're ready.
All right. Thanks, Taylor, and thanks for everybody for having me here. It's good to see y'all. Thought about doing this remotely, but I thought it'd be nice to see you in person, so made the curvy drive out and here I am. So yeah, I'm gonna give you kind of a quick overview of what we've been doing and probably spend. The majority of the time talking through this menu of housing strategies that we've developed. So we're really just at the front end of that piece of work, so this is kind of a chance to get some early input from y'all. On those strategies and some initial priorities that we've identified as staff and the technical advisory committee. And see what you think of those priorities. If you would, if you would suggest that anything be a lower or higher priority. That's definitely something I'd like to hear from you if you have opinions about that tonight, so. I will just kind of walk through these slides. These are some of the same ones you got in your packet. This is just kind of a flowchart of the steps we're going through in this process. So we've essentially gone through kind of the first three steps that you see there. But a pretty big chunk of time is spent on that, the last step there, and then a certain amount of time on the adoption process. So we've done a bunch of the technical analysis. Taylor mentioned that we have another team member, Johnson Economics, so they're an economics firm. They conducted the work on projecting future housing needs, kind of the extent of needs and the distribution of types of different housing needs. Our firm worked on the kind of the supply side of things, the buildable land capacity within the city's urban growth boundary. And then we compared those two things. I'm gonna give you the highlights of the comparison tonight. I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail on the first few steps there. But I will kind of hit some of the highlights of what we found. I will also talk about the results of an online survey that we did. That was focused partly on, uh, well, it's kind of focused on, on. The people's perceptions about housing needs now and in the future, so I'll give you some highlights on that too. And then again, we'll spend a chunk of time, however much you want to devote on the housing strategies. I'll walk through them. I'll try not to go into too much detail, but hopefully enough to just kind of give you a sense of what we're talking about. And I'll say that our next step is really to delve into those in more detail, and I'll talk more about that when we, when we get to those. But we are just kind of at the front end of that, so next slide. This is sort of just another form, but a slightly more detailed form of the last slide. It just kind of shows the schedule for the process. Again, we've kind of gotten through those first couple of steps. But now we're gonna spend a chunk of time working on those housing strategies and. Kind of indicating, okay, what would you need to do as a city to implement those strategies? So for things that are related to updates to your development code, we will draft development code update language. For other types of strategies, we'll basically identify in more detail what the steps would be that the city or its partners would need to go through to implement those strategies. So that's what's coming up, and then there's an adoption process at the end of this as well. The other thing, just to note, in terms of kind of outcomes or products. Is an update to the housing chapter of your comprehensive plan, so that's another thing that will come out of this process. And that's part of what you would adopt at the end of the process. All right, next one. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about this online open house that we conducted. And I printed these out because I don't have my glasses on because I can't, they fog up with my mask on. So I can't see that totally well, and then when I printed it out, it didn't work out that great. It kind of cut off a bunch, so I'm sorry about that. I'll do my best to kind of read the slides up there. We had about a little over seventy responses. Which wasn't, uh, which was pretty decent, you know, for the size of town and the fact that this was a survey about a very broad topic. You know, it wasn't about a specific project or improving a road in front of somebody's house or through their neighborhood. So we felt like that was a pretty decent turnout. It wasn't huge, but it was pretty decent. And I think, uh, you know, if we do another one of these in the future, we're gonna work even harder to get even more people to participate. Most of the folks who responded are homeowners and most of them live in kind of traditional single, single-family homes. So that's just something to keep in mind when you look at the results. And. So that's a, and that's a little bit different from sort of the percentage, how the population breaks down. There's a somewhat larger percentage of the population in Estacada that lives in other types of housing, so I was kind of putting that out there. But still, this, this kind of bar chart on the right, one of the questions we asked people was. What kind of housing do they perceive a need for? And we asked them, do you perceive it's not needed at all, up to greatly needed? And so this, the people felt there was the strongest need for sort of traditional single-family homes. And that is what sort of the majority of homes were expecting to be built here in the future, about two-thirds are those types of homes. But in the housing needs analysis that we did, we did identify the need for kind of a growing share to some degree of. Other types of housing duplexes, triplexes. Townhomes, apartments, et cetera. So we did ask people, you know, what do they think about the relative need for these things and sort of the bigger. The type of housing in terms of the number of units in it or the denser the housing, the less perceived need, need people who responded to the survey found. But I would say, you know, between forty and fifty percent did say they thought there was potentially a, a need or a strong need for. Everything kind of up through triplexes as well as courtyard apartments or cottage cluster housing. But somewhat less of a need, relative need for townhomes and apartments, basically. So something to kind of note. And then the other thing I would say is that we asked people what they thought about the finding in our report. That showed that there is likely to be a, an increased need or a growing need for sort of attached forms of housing. So again, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes, apartments. And about sixty, uh, about half of the residents said, yeah, we agree with that. We think that makes sense. So not everybody, but more than half thought that that made sense and they agreed with that. So those are some results on that question. We asked people. About where, whether they thought certain forms of housing would fit well within their neighborhoods. And I'm gonna say, not totally surprisingly, people didn't always think that forms of housing that are not the same as theirs. Were, are a good fit for their neighborhood. They were more likely to say, yeah, for sure, single, traditional, single-family homes. Because that's kind of what's in their neighborhood and to some degree thought that. Duplexes would be a reasonable fit, accessory dwelling, and it's kind of about half either said yes or they were kind of on the fence. And then a majority of people said, well, no, not really, or not sure that some of those other forms of housing would be a good fit within their neighborhoods. So that was, those were kind of some of the main findings from the survey. And again, I would just say, you know, to sort of recognize that. The folks who responded were not totally representative of the people in the community and that's, but that's who responded. You know, that's who took the time to do the survey and I think it's important to note that as well. And again, also just to note. That about fifty-four percent of people said, yeah, we agree that in the future, there are likely will, will be a greater need for some of these attached forms of housing. So we also asked people just kind of, do you have other thoughts? There were a lot of thoughts. And we included in the survey kind of a list of all those. Just, you know, a few things that we noted. You had somebody from the sheriff's department here earlier. There were comments about traffic, crime. And some comments about concerns about infrastructure capacity, kind of keeping up with growth and development. You've had a lot of growth here. You're, you're gonna continue to have growth here, so people have concerns about that. Definitely some desire for what people call workforce housing, basically housing that's affordable to people who, who work here or work in the area. Sort of, I would say, medium income housing or, or moderate cost housing. And also some comments about a desire for more rental options as well. And a certain amount of comments about, you know, we don't really like a lot of growth. We don't want to see a lot of growth. So there were some comments along those lines. And also again, comments that, yeah, generally a wider variety of housing and more affordable housing options are needed in Estacada. So those were some of the kind of different types of comments we heard in the survey. Want to go take a breath and stop and just see if y'all have any, any questions for me about the survey results.
Any questions?
All right.
You're so good. You're so informative.
I will keep going, yeah, I, I'll tell you. My wife has a nickname for me. It's Chatty Maddie, and so I do talk a lot. And so sometimes that means I don't get any questions, but sometimes I do, so we'll see.
I don't have a question, but I guess I have a statement. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for pointing out that the survey is not a good reflection of. Our, you know, of our whole, uh, community as a whole.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, 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 that helps, that helps with these numbers.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out, it's not, it's not way off, but it's definitely different, so I think it's important to note that. So can I go to the next one, Taylor? So now I'm gonna talk a little bit about that comparison of future land need and supply of land. That zone for housing that's kind of, that's a supply of buildable land. And I put buildable in quotes because, just because we identified it in the inventory doesn't mean somebody's gonna go out and build on it today. It doesn't mean every owner is ready to sell it or develop it or whatever, but over the long term, over the next twenty years. It's assumed or expected to be potentially buildable. So I'll talk about kind of the comparison between those two things, and as I talk about the comparison, I'll, I'll hit a few highlights in terms of. The results of both the projection and also the, the supply side of things. So we looked at the demand in terms of, uh, demand for future needed housing. I'll, I'll, there's a little spoiler alert here. I'll say, we need to use for the purposes of doing this analysis. We need to use population estimates and forecasts that are generated by Portland State University. That's part of sort of the state required process for this. A lot of communities are not super happy. A lot of communities are not super happy about that because often. They think that those estimates or projections particularly don't reflect accurately rates of growth. And I would say here, we would tend to agree. So we did some alternative projections. And I will talk about those in a couple of slides. That's my little spoiler alert. So. I will talk about those alternative projections and what things would look like. If you grew faster than what those Portland State University projections show. But this first slide is kind of using the Portland State University projections. And the analysis that we did, and then comparing that. To the supply side of things. So kind of generally what we find here. When we did this analysis was one that we're projecting a need, if you kind of split up the housing types. About two thirds of future housing units would be, again, more traditional, single family. Detached homes, individual homes on individual lots. And then the other third would be split between apartments and then what we would call often middle housing. So duplexes, triplexes, quadiplexes, townhomes, things of that nature. So that's kind of how the, the need shakes out. We assume some certain densities of those housings, those types of housing to come up with the projected land need. And so the, on the, the right hand column in terms of the. The new units and the. Land and yeah, acres are over there too, kind of shows you. The difference between need and supply and also gives you a sense of how many acres of land are needed for future housing. On the left is the supply side. That's the, the amount of buildable land within the urban growth boundary. And when we say buildable, we mean it's not constrained by things like creeks and wetlands and steep slopes. Or it's not already planned for use by us as a school or some other public use. And then it's zoned generally for housing. Now, some of this land is. In the city limits, some of it's between the city limits and the urban growth boundary, but it's still part of the supply of land, even if it's. Between the, not yet annexed, because the assumption is over the long term, that land will be annexed. It will be part of the supply of land over the next twenty years. So sort of the bottom line. Results here are over in the far right column and the, the bottom row. And they do show that you have enough land within your UGB to meet that twenty year demand. And that particularly for, again, kind of individual homes on single lots, you've got enough land for kind of that. That middle housing, you've got enough land or a surplus of land and a fair bit of surplus. I mean, a lot of additional units could be built in addition to what we projected is needed. Now for. What we described as high density or multifamily apartments. You're kind of right on the edge. You do not have very much land that's zoned specifically for that kind of housing. You have some additional land that's zoned to allow for mixed use development. So like housing over commercial or retail. That's not all part of the supply. So you've got a little bit of a cushion, but in terms of just purely land that's zoned for higher density housing or apartments. You're kind of right on the edge. So what that means is if you do grow faster than what these numbers indicate, you will have a deficit of land in that category. So I think that's kind of, that's probably the most important takeaway from this, this table. I'll go through the next couple of slides and then I'll stop again. We'll see if you have any questions about this comparison. So next one, Taylor, and this is just a map. It's just showing you. What that kind of inventory looks like. And the color coding, the green are vacant properties, the kind of, I'll say Aqua are partially vacant. Which means that there's some kind of development on the property, probably an existing house, but it's big enough and it's zoned in such a way. That you could build more housing on the land. So some of it's purely vacant, some of it's not, but it's still got capacity. The red properties are developed, so not indicating any capacity there. And then the red hatched areas are the ones that are constrained by some kind of typically natural resource or natural hazard. And in a number of cases, your development code either says, you know, the, what you can do on those properties is restricted, but not always. Like on steep slopes, you can actually develop, but it's harder, it's a little more expensive. You're allowed to deduct that from the inventory per the state rules. So we deduct it from the inventory. It doesn't mean you absolutely can't build in some of these areas, although some you can't if it's in the flood plain, for instance. Or the floodway. But we do deduct things from the inventory that are allowed to be deducted to give you a better sense of what's the, the more realistic supply. And then again, some of these properties that are shown and it's kind of hard to discern, but oh yeah, it's easier on the screen than on my piece of paper. The darker blue, those are public properties. So. I don't know what all of them are, are going to be used for, but we took them out of the inventory. So next one, Taylor. This is the, that alternative forecasting information. So we did an alternative. Forecast and we compared. Then, you know, what's the, the forecast, forecasted need for new housing units under that alternative forecast? So for that, there were two issues that we saw with the PSU numbers. One, the current estimate appears to be low. And when we looked at how much development has occurred in the last couple of years and what the US census data seems to be saying. So that their, their current estimate's low. And then their growth rate's pretty low compared to what you've been seeing in terms of recent growth. So we basically bumped up the current estimate to be what for the high forecast adjusted. We bumped up the current estimate of population and housing units. And we increased the rate of growth to be more consistent with what you've seen over the last ten years or so. And so when we did that, what we showed was a forecasted need for about thirty-seven hundred. Units of housing as opposed to, I gotta look back at the earlier one. Let's see. All right, six thirty-seven. Yeah, six thirty-seven. So pretty significant change. You would still have enough land overall. Even if you start out at a higher number and you grow at a higher rate, that's consistent with what you'd seen in the last ten years. You would still have a surplus, but you wouldn't have as much of a surplus. You'd run out of lands, you know, more quickly or use it up more quickly. And like I said before, you will, you would end up with a deficit of land for higher density houses. So that's, I think, you know, sort of the bottom line, and it's really all about timing. Again, sort of land supply overall is not your main problem. But it will become potentially a problem for certain types of land. But it's just a thing you have to keep track of, right? It's, and it's some, this is not an analysis you should update only every twenty years. You know, it's something you should be doing every five to seven years. So that you don't get caught with a really significant deficit of land for housing. So. I must stop. There's another lot of talking and just see if you have any questions about that analysis. And then after that, we'll talk about the housing strategies.
So maybe this, this might be a silly question, but what happens then if you have a deficit of land? Do you then reevaluate the UGB? And then does that, will that just get pushed out or does it get taken to a vote to where you then push?
So ultimately, if you end up updating this analysis and at some point and you find you do have an overall deficit of land. Then you would potentially, yes, look at adjusting your UGB. But before you can expand your UGB or adjust your UGB. You need to look at what are called efficiency measures. So you need to look at. Are there ways to use the land within the boundary more efficiently than you're using it now? And I will say that a number of the housing, of the strategies that I'm going to talk about tonight, those would be considered efficiency measures. So we're kind of, as part of this study, kind of preemptively doing some of that, right? So if you got to that point. You will have actually done a certain amount of that work as part of this process, that looking at efficiency measures. Because that's what some of these things would be considered. They're kind of in the list of the, the, the efficiency measures the state talks about. Now, if you. Are deficient in a certain type of land, you do need to address that. So, you know, I think that's why. When I talk about some of these strategies, some of them are higher priorities because they relate to that potential deficit for. Of land that's zoned for higher density housing or for those forms of housing. Yeah, good question, not a silly question. Yes.
So then, that essentially this is saying our, our. We really don't need to worry about the UGB at this point. You know, that's not the, the focus of this. The focus is the efficiency portion here. What are we doing with the land within that? Is that?
Yes, that's, that's, yeah, it's a good sort of synopsis.
So be it the PSU numbers or the alternative forecast, either way, we're fine with, with the amount of.
In terms of overall amount of land in your UGB, yeah, you're still doing okay. Even with the alternative forecast, yes, correct.
And then aside note Denise. I, I'd be curious to heat, to see if Kurt. Is if, if these numbers would align with the wastewater treatment plant forecast as well, too. Yeah, okay.
So, um, the deficit that we might run into, we, we, we can solve that. Well, as long as we don't run into, into a deficit in other areas, we can solve that just by rezoning.
That would be one way to resolve that. Yeah, there's some, there's a couple of different ways to think about it, and that would definitely be one. Yep. Absolutely. All right. Okay, so the next bit of this, we'll talk about these different housing strategies. So go to the next slide there, Taylor. So again, I'll, I'll say it one more time. This is just an initial look at these. And though our initial look reflects the work that the city's committee for housing affordability and diversity did. So, you know, that was kind of our starting point for this. We don't want to reinvent the wheel here. And that committee really looked at a pretty wide range of strategies. There's a few strategies that we kind of added to the list. Based on our work for other communities. The state has developed this kind of crowdsourced list of strategies. So we looked at that as well. But we really did want to kind of plug in and build on the work that, that the Chad did. So I'll talk about that as I talk about some of these specific strategies. And so we've identified again, some preliminary priorities. We talked to our technical advisory committee for the project about those priorities. We got some feedback from them. So what's in your packet represents what we took to them. So I'll talk about a couple of places where. They had, for the most part, they thought it made sense. The priorities we identified made sense, but in a couple of places, they thought we had to look at some. Some changes there. And they also just kind of helped us help inform. Some of the information we had about the work that Chad has done. So I, I'll, I'll talk about that too in a couple of places. We organized the strategies in the menu and four categories. Land supply, sort of policies in your development code, updates to your development code. Incentives, there's a certain amount of overlap really between the development code stuff and the incentives. But they're a little different. And then funding sources and kind of how to use money that would be generated from funding sources. So I'll talk about each of those. I'll talk about each strategy. I'll sort of, I think, talk about them by category. And I'll stop after a category and just see if y'all have any comments or questions. So that you don't have to listen to me go through the whole long list of them at one time. That might be a little brutal. So although there's a lot of them under the first category, so I'll just give you a little fair warning on that. So I think Taylor's maybe going to put up the, the other document that we sent you, which is the menu. But you might have it on your screens too, but this is kind of what I'll use to talk through them instead of the last couple of slides. So, oh, I was wrong too. The first category, there's only a couple of them. It's the second category where there's a bunch of them. So sorry about that. So the first category is land supply strategies, and the first one of those is rezon land, and that was the one you asked about. Yeah, given that. You are potentially facing a deficit for, you know, one category of land, that is a way to address that. Now, we identified that as a medium priority. It might maybe more appropriately be medium or high, just kind of given where you are with that particular category. And given what that alternative forecast said. But that is one way to address a shortfall of land in a specific category is to. It's not the only way, but it's one way to address that shortfall. I'll talk about some other things you could do as well. And then the second thing, just in terms of land supply strategies, is looking at the UGB. Given what we found in terms of overall land supply and need, that's a low priority. You're, you wouldn't, you're not going to need to do that, nor would you be sort of justified in doing that in the short term. So, so we identified that one as a lower. So questions before I tackle the next bigger group? That makes sense. Okay. Yeah, go for it.
Quick, quick question or hopefully the rezoning, that was, I guess, from a rookie standpoint, that seemed like the, the one that would be. The, the thing to do. You know, we put, put something in high density that was more.
It's, yeah. It's a sort of a pretty quick fix and. As long as, you know, and you've got a lot of land out there. So I think it, the, the only, like. Two things I would say that make it maybe not quite as quick and easy as one might assume. One is making sure you're sort of rezoning it in the right areas. I mean, ideally you want to zone higher density land in a place where there's more services. For people, more infrastructure, etc. And two. People in surrounding areas aren't always excited about it. So then you just have to kind of go through that process of addressing those concerns. So those are the two things that make it maybe not quite a quick slam dunk. But certainly from a sort of. Efficient use of time standpoint and also making it more immediately, increasing the capacity of those properties more immediately. Yeah, it's a, it's. It's an, an early thing to think about. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, so the, the next batch of these all have to do with changes to your development code. So I'll go through them kind of moderately quickly, just because there's so many of them and then I'll stop and I can give you more information. So the next one, which would also address the issue that I talked about in terms of the. Limited capacity of land for higher density housing would be to increase the allowed density in some of your existing zones. That increases the capacity as well, and that would help resolve that same issue. The other thing I would note is that in Estacada, the way your code addresses density is through minimum lot size. I find that as somebody who works on development codes, not always the most effective way to measure density for higher density zones. And then just purely using density often makes more sense and provides more flexibility for the developer as well. Saying you have to devote a certain amount of land area per unit when you're talking about. Apartments or some other forms of housing that are higher density. So even if you don't increase the density, you might want to relook at your code in terms of how you define it for that type of zone. So that's one thing to think about. Establishing minimum density requirements. This is, can be an important thing to do for higher density zones so that you don't lose what little land you have that's zoned for higher density. Because often somebody can come in and develop some of that land for a lower density housing. And that will eat up that supply much more quickly than if they developed it for higher density housing, and then you've got even more of a deficit. So. That's in a more, I think, an important one to think about, but particularly when you have a potential deficit of higher density land. So. I'm going to say most of these zoning strategies, we identified as higher priority. One, because they were things that the Chad talked about and recommended. Two, because they're things you have more control over than say. Generating funding or buying land or things like that. And three, because they are effective at addressing at least some of the, the issues we identified in the, the housing needs analysis. So that's kind of another little aside. And the third one is facilitating what's again called middle housing or missing middle housing or other kind of potentially. And I'll say potentially lower cost types of housing. Middle housing isn't always going to be affordable to people with low incomes. You know, it, it depends on what the housing market is doing, what people can get when they sell a, a, a housing unit. But it, it does have the potential to be lower cost. Because the cost of constructing it tends to be lower. So. You all are maybe familiar with House Bill two thousand and one, which was recently passed by the state legislature, which requires a number of cities around the state. To allow for middle housing in a much broader range of areas than they. Than they have sort of, I'll say semi historically, a lot of cities allowed for that a long time ago, and then they stopped and now they need to start again. You all are below the size thresholds for cities that have to do that. So you don't have to, you don't have to do the things that the state says certain cities have to do, but. We did identify the potential need for those forms. But we did identify the potential need for those forms of housing. And it was a thing that your Chad talked about in terms of just increasing the diversity of housing types. And so doing some things to allow for that type of development in a broader range of areas was identified as a potentially high. Priority. And this menu sort of talks about a number of different types of housing that you could look at in terms of doing that. And that is a thing we'll look at in terms of looking at potential updates to your development code. Also promoting or encouraging or making it easier to build accessory dwelling units. That was another recommendation from the Chad. They talked about, you know, being more flexible with ADU's design and development standards. Just to reduce the barriers to that. I'll talk later about systems development charges and that's another way to think about that. So that was identified as relatively high priority, development of non-conforming lots. That's essentially making sure that if somebody has a lot that's smaller than what the zoning would typically allow development on, that they can still build on it. I think that's generally going to be the case here, is the case in most places. And so we didn't, I, I don't think there's a significant issue with your code on that, but it's important to take a look and make sure. So we identified that as a relatively medium priority. Streamlining or reducing off-street parking requirements. When you sort of think about the cost of building housing, particularly on smaller lots. Providing land and space for parking is one of the things that increases cost. More than a lot of other things. So that can reduce the cost of housing. We identified this as high in part because the Chad talked about this. Although when we talked about this with the technical advisory committee, they said, you know, the Chad wasn't saying. Across the whole city, reduce parking, off-street parking requirements for all types of housing. It was more, think about doing that in a more targeted way. So the couple of strategies down is encouraging diverse housing types in high opportunity neighborhoods. And I think that was kind of more what they were thinking about in those neighborhoods. Maybe look at reducing some of the off-street parking requirements. So that you have more potential to increase the capacity for housing in those areas and reduce the cost of building housing in those areas. So again, not necessarily just kind of across the board, reducing parking everywhere. And then the one above that, so I already kind of talked about that a little bit. The housing increasing or encouraging more diverse types in specific neighborhoods. And I think that, that's sort of areas around the downtown in particular, or in other places where you've got more services and amenities for folks. And then also, you know, looking at some potential zoning incentives, especially for the development. When somebody's coming in and proposing to develop housing that is affordable to people in the lowest income ranges. That there be some potential incentives for them in terms of some of the other things that we already talked about here, reduced parking requirements. If they can demonstrate that there's lower parking needs for those developments. Potential increases in the number of units they could develop, things that would allow them to build those units more affordably. But would be incentives for certain types of housing developments. And then kind of the last one on this list or in this section is just generally. Well, reducing unnecessary barriers to housing. The Chad talked in particular about making sure that there aren't barriers for converting. For instance, interior space to an accessory dwelling unit. You could also think about that in terms of converting a single family home into a duplex. That's one of the things that came out of the H B House Bill 2001. Standards and guidelines was kind of making sure there aren't barriers to those conversions. Because that's a way somebody can do that and get a little more value and income out of their home. And also provide some more options or diversity in housing types. So those last few were identified as relatively medium priorities. As opposed to the, the first bunch. So now I'll stop because that was a bunch of them and see if y'all have any questions or comments. Again, particularly on any of the priorities that we identified here.
Great. So you said change the way we identify, instead of using lot size, use density. So pardon my ignorance, but what would that look like? What would it to identify or to categorize it or however, but to, to use density rather than lot size, what would that look like?
It would look like so, and you, you do it more for probably your higher density zones and more for. Where someone was building townhouses or apartments. Instead of saying for each dwelling unit, well, the way I think your code structured is the first dwelling unit. You need X thousand square feet, like 5,000. I can't remember what it is. And for every unit after that, you need another 1,500 square feet. And that equates to an average number of houses per acre. And it just is more flexible and easy to measure if you just like cut out the lot size part of it and say. In those zones, you can build up to this many units per acre on a given piece of land. Instead of you have to have this much space for a given housing unit, which doesn't make a lot of sense. If you're especially building kind of a multi-story dwelling. So that's kind of what it'll look like in your code. Yeah, and then you would.
Have that in the downtown.
In the downtown zone, you do.
For the mixed uses, we have that wording.
That's, that's how you measure it there. But in your R3 zone, you still use, yeah, lot size. So it'd be kind of changing your R3 zone to make it look more like what your downtown zone does in terms of how you measure. Housing density.
Okay, and then the second part to my question, so what would it, what was the minimum density requirement? What would that look like?
That would look like in your, again, in your, probably just your R3 zone. I mean, you could do this in, in any of them, but in some cities do this in kind of all their residential zones. But at least in your R3 zone, you want to say, in this zone. The housing that you build has to be at least this number of units per acre. And so that you don't, in a zone where you don't have a lot of land, allow somebody to build. Frankly, individual homes on larger lots. And then use up that land more quickly so that you, you know, don't have as much of a supply. So you'd be, you'd require somebody to build closer to what you're, you're planning for and zoning that land for, as opposed to just whatever they want. In that particular zone. Yeah, and I would say that's the most important zone to think about it in, you know, it's less important to think about it in your. Your R1 and R2 zones. You could think about it in your R2 zones, but it's most important in your R1, on your R3.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
ADUs. What do people use those for? I mean, is that, is that really a viable solution to anything? Or do they, people use those for vacation rentals, things along those lines? Or are they truly something to help?
I, you know, people do use them for different things. Definitely in some places, people use them for vacation rentals, for sure. And so if that's a concern here or really anywhere, there are communities where that is a concern. They regulate that use of ADUs and they say you either can't do it. Or you have to at least get a permit to do it and pay a fee, et cetera. So in addition to doing that though, you know, they're more historically, I guess, used sort of pre the Airbnb boom. For extended family members, whether it's somebody's grandma or mom or dad or kids. You know, kid, I got a couple of kids, one in college and one just out of college. They ever come back and need to live with me, put them in, put them in the ADU. If I told my daughter that, she's like, I'm not coming back to live with you. But anyway, that is, they are often used for kind of that kind of use. Or just as a longer-term rental for somebody, for somebody who's single or it's maybe a couple, they don't need a lot of space. It provides a little bit of additional income for the primary homeowner. And it provides a smaller unit for somebody who just doesn't need or want or can't afford as much space. So it, it can, you know, they can be used kind of by a variety of different types of households. Yeah.
And then the, what you're going through here, the policy and development code strategies. That's, to me, it seems like rezoning light, you know, something that can be done without having to go through. To, to change the zones, make them more friendly, make them more, you know, better use for. For helping the city out as opposed to just doing a total rezone.
Yes, most of these things would entail updating the standards within your development code. To allow for more things in more places or to reduce barriers to development of certain types of housing. Or again, change the allowed densities. So they wouldn't be changing something from one zone to another, but they would be changing the standards. Either throughout the zone, wherever it's applied in the city or in a specific area. That's kind of the idea behind the encouraged diverse housing types in high opportunity areas. You could, neighborhoods, you could do that through some kind of overlay zone. But that would also be a thing you would do as part of your development code. Yeah, all of those represent things you would do in terms of updating your development code in some way. Yeah, and then you'd want to just make sure that. When we work with you to update your comprehensive plan, that you have policies in your comprehensive plan that support these things you're doing in your code. Just to provide that kind of policy basis as well. So that's why it says policy and development code changes. Yeah. Other questions? The priorities generally sound kind of on track for those? Okay, great. All right, let me hit the last couple of sections of them here. So incentives, a couple of different types of incentives that we talked about here. One has to do with systems development charges. And so this was something that the, that the chat looked at. They talked about a number, they and we talked about a number of different ways in which you can adjust your systems development charges. You know, obviously those impact the cost of housing and the affordability of housing. But they're also important in terms of you all paying for. Paying for the facilities you need to support growth, right? That's how you pay for things like water, facilities, sewer facilities, parks, facilities, et cetera. So there were some specific things that they suggested and that we will often suggest, at least considering or looking at. So one is reducing or exempting SDCs for certain types of housing. Particularly if somebody comes in with a proposal again to, to develop housing that's affordable to people in a certain income range. It's very challenging to build, you know, at a cost that allows for renting or selling it to somebody in that income range. Another thing that not too many cities, but a couple of cities in Oregon have done is to update. What's called their SDC methodology, that's sort of the, how you figure out what the SDC rates are and then how you apply the fees. And to modify those so that they vary by dwelling size. So I haven't taken a close look at yours. Most typically, they will often vary by. Single-family units versus multifamily units, they'll vary a little bit. But there are some places that have varied them to more directly match the size of a house or dwelling. Which then would reduce them for things like duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, if they were smaller than a typical home. And that really is sort of the point of an SDC. It's supposed to be you're, you're paying for the impact of the, the house or the development on this, the system. So that's another thing to think about, reducing them for accessory dwelling units. That's something a number of cities around the state have done where they want to encourage those. Reducing or waiving the parks SDCs, if you've got an existing park that's near proposed affordable or needed housing. And then tying the transportation SDCs to parking. So those are all sort of ways you could look at adjusting your SDCs. Then the other thing to think about is expedited development review. So making it quicker to get through the land use permitting process for certain types of housing. Particularly potentially in a middle housing or multifamily housing. Which can reduce the cost somewhat because it reduces the amount of time that the developers, money tied up and that reduces the cost to some degree. Now, I, I haven't talked to Taylor a lot about kind of how quickly you guys are processing things now. A lot of times there's not a ton you can do, you know, there are certain statutory requirements related to notice procedures. That you have to apply. There's already some legislation that says for certain types of affordable housing. You have to provide a, a shorter review time. So there might, might not be like a huge amount of, of room here to do this. But it was something that the Chad said, hey, take a look at this. And so both of those things were identified as relatively medium priorities. Questions about those two before I go on? Okay, the last category is funding uses and sources. There's a few in here I'll talk about. The first one was a construction excise task, tax, excuse me. This one actually, the Chad said, we don't think this is something the city should pursue. We kept it in the list just to note that it's a thing. And that, that was sort of the direction from the chat. So we identified it as lower, not recommended for that reason, you know, already kind of looked at it and said, ah, we don't think we're going to move forward with that one. It is a potential source of money for. Supporting kind of lower income housing, but there's a number of sort of sideboards or stipulations that go along with it. And then it also kind of increases the cost of all housing. And I think that's where some of the objections generally come to it. So there's that one. Tax abatements or exemptions, there's a number of these that are authorized by the state. You already have adopted one of them, the vertical housing development zone exemption. So you've already got that one in place. There's some other ones you could look at. There's a multifamily housing abatement. There's a low-income housing abatement. You, there's a couple of different ways to think about applying those. One is if somebody comes in and, and asks you to apply that or allow for that, you could just make the decision on a project by project basis. Or you could pass a resolution or ordinance that says, if somebody comes in, we're going to say yes. You know, we're going to apply this thing for anybody that would qualify under the state guidelines. So that's another one to think about. And what I hear from particularly developers of again, housing that's targeted to lower income or moderate income households. That is a really important strategy for them in terms of reducing the cost of developing that form of housing. So that's something to think about, tax increment financing, otherwise referred to often as urban renewal. It's another one. You have an urban renewal district, we heard a report on it earlier tonight, right? And so you're already kind of using that strategy. There are ways to use it more specifically around housing. The Chad talked about potentially a feasibility study to create a district at the mill site. And to provide kind of a set aside of some of the urban renewal money to fund affordable housing in that area. There's other ways you can use urban renewal through either acquisition of land or. Provide, yeah, acquiring and then providing land for certain housing projects. Or using it to pay for the cost of public infrastructure improvements that then reduce the cost of building the housing. So there's some different ways to think about using TIF or urban renewal. All of these we identified as relatively medium strategies. Partly just because they take more work to administer. And they have sort of more targeted impacts. So land acquisition and banking. You know, there's sort of a couple of ways to think about this. One is to try to develop some kind of citywide program for this, which is frankly challenging for a smaller city. We tend to sort of suggest that you think about it in a more opportunistic way. Look, if you own a piece of property. And there's a partner out there who can develop it and you can sell it to them at a lower price, that's a good thing to think about. Or just simply supporting. Community partners who are building certain types of housing that you're trying to encourage in finding sites. And, in finding either city or other publicly owned sites. So, and that one kind of goes along with use of community land trust or support for community land trust. Who will often be the developers and essentially hold the land, sell the units. The units can still increase in value, but the land doesn't. So it keeps them affordable for longer periods of time. That's kind of how that model works. And then the last one on here is financial assistance programs and community education partnerships. I, Chad identified this as a high priority and we did too, particularly along the lines of the education and partnerships. So just getting information out there to whatever you decide to do, whichever programs or strategies you pursue. Let people know you're doing that. And let people know that it's, you are encouraging, you know, wider diversity of housing in this community and, and providing information about that. So there are also kind of financial assistance programs that some cities put into place, not super widely and not a lot of small cities. But some like reduced utility bills. And they're basically applied to folks who would apply, who would qualify for other types, similar types of programs based on income. So that's another way to think about that one. So again, that was identified as a high priority more along the lines of the, I think, the education and partnership. So, all right, I'm done with those strategies. All right, I'm done with those strategies. Any questions about that last batch? Or again, comments on the priorities?
I think you're, you're getting off easy tonight. Counselor Dunsmere is not here and she's more knowledgeable on this, uh, this line of, uh. This, on, on this stuff, um, I, 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 I'm trying to come up with stuff that, that she might ask, but I just don't know enough. So. But yeah, no, good, good presentation.
Thank you, thank you. And yeah, if she has comments, you know, after, afterwards, I will be happy to take those and, you know. Kind of factor them into what we do next.
Overall, I really appreciate this. I think it's great to see, you know, from a land standpoint, it seems like we've got a good amount of land. It's just, and, and we've got really a good amount of land for the main needs that are out there, but we can't overlook. The, uh, the need for rental property or higher density. And, and I think that's what I'm looking forward to then is some ideas on how to better. Get us ready. For, uh, for making that, uh, the land more purposeful for that.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
I, I did, I did think of a question.
All right.
So, uh, you know, I know the Chad. Chad doesn't recommend it, not, not recommend it low, but. Is the construction excise tax something that we should just take off the table or we should still be, you know, we should still be considering? You know, I mean, cause I don't, I don't, I don't even think we were, everybody was sold on not doing it. I mean, that's kind of what brought all this on was the construction excise tax being brought up, plus our growth, but, uh. You know, I don't want to just completely take something off the table. That could benefit us, you know, could benefit us, you know, even in the near future. But yeah, I mean, have you seen, are there a lot of small towns our size that are?
There are a number of, I'll say sort of small to medium sized towns who have adopted or are adopting construction excise taxes. I'm not sure the total number in Oregon. Some of the examples I can think of though are. Milwaukee, Newport, I think Lincoln City did one recently. Tigered, I mean, they're larger. They have a pretty sort of robust set of tools they're implementing. They, they adopted theirs just about a year and a half ago, two years ago. I mean, I think if, if you wanted us to at least continue to look at it, we could do a little more of a look at what might it generate? And sort of describe what the, I guess. Requirements are associated with it. So, you know, one of the requirements, there's some requirements around how you use the money that's generated from it. So. We could give you a little more information on that in terms of, here's what it might generate on an annual basis. Here's how you would need to use at least some of the money and here's what the opportunities would be for using some of the other money. One of the, one of the requirements actually is that you use some of it for, to pay for the cost of development incentives. So you sort of like use some of it to backfill the reductions in SDCs if that's a strategy that you pursue. So. So I guess. I don't know that I would recommend one thing or another, but if you all want us to just at least do a little more work on it or describe it. Describe the implications or the impacts of a little more, we'd be happy to do that.
I, I would love, I for one would love to see that. But it looks like a few.
Okay, so yeah, yeah, we won't go crazy on it, but we'll, we'll do a little more work on it just so you kind of. You know, if you want to talk about a little more, or maybe you'll make it somewhat more informed opinion. I don't want to. Say the Chad didn't, but you know, we'll provide a little more on it. Happy to do that. Sure.
Well, we appreciate your presentation. It was very thorough and involved and you're a great speaker. So thank you for that. Taylor, is there anything you want to interject?
Um, I, I just want to make sure, um, Matt, was there anything else? You know, we're not at the end of the PowerPoint here. I don't know if there was anything, any.
I think the only thing left on the PowerPoint and it was sort of more for the tack was like next steps. And I think. The next steps for us are to dig into these strategies in more detail. And to start to either identify again. What the relative impact might be of some of these strategies or what would be the steps necessary to. Implement them, either here are the types of changes to your development code that we would recommend. And help to define for you and or, you know, here are some of the steps you'd need to go through for some of the other strategies. So. That was really the only other thing I had. Is there any other thing I talked to the? Talk about that you remember that I missed tonight, Taylor?
I think you did a great job covering. Everything.
Awesome. All right, thank you.
I can't think of anything and I would just, uh, let the council know if any other questions or thoughts come up. Related to this project and especially the draft menu that we just went through. Please, by all means, shoot me an email or give me a call. Be happy to talk about it or, and you know, pass along any questions or feedback. To the project team so we can incorporate it.
All right. And, and thank you for letting me have so much of your time tonight. I know I did a lot of talking, so I appreciate it.
Is that a cursor or does Justin have his hand up? Okay.
All right.
So thank you, Matt. Thank you, Taylor.
Yeah, absolutely. And I will see you again at some point. Thank you.
All right. So next on our list, we have award the city audit services contract. You've all read over that. I think we've had a couple of times already. Is this, uh, you need a motion on this? Is that what? Okay, can I get a motion to award the city's audit services contract?
Yep, I'll go ahead. I moved to approve the city and you are a contract with Acuity for audit preparation for the years ending June 30th. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, last on the list, we have the sewer billing request. I think I'll hand that over to you.
So, um, Tom Willie owns the Masonic Building, three ninety Broadway.
I can't hear her.
Okay, now. And so, um, you know, in the past many years, there's been a restaurant in there and then other, other types of things. And recently the, the restaurant has moved out. He's repurposing the building. And right now he has the chiropractor office. The aroma massage person by appointment. He has a shared workplace that that's what he's expanding to downtown. And then he also has the bigger room where the church is in there on Sundays. And maybe I think one night a week they have services and that, and then the upstairs where the shared use will be. The church will use part of it for storage and he'll use for storage. And looking back at his water usage, our, as you know, our sewer usage is not based on water usage. The methodology is based on something else. I can't explain it to you, Kurt, good, but I get. And so there's uses that are defined. An office has like, uh, one unit per ten employees or a restaurant has. One unit per seating. It's based on seating and capacity. So each thing has their, a church is one unit just for a church. And looking at his, so his request is at this point, if we were to do it, if we looked at each individual unit. He would have one for the church, um, one for the shared, because they don't have more than ten people, one for the chiropractor, one for the massage clinic. And it seems like there was one of a use. So he'd have five sewer u- units. His, looking at his water usage, which even though we don't base it on that, it does correlate to what can leave the building. You know, um, his water usage, even with restaurants in the past, back when Deli Delight was there. And I, now I'm going way back because they haven't been there forever. The water usage was high. They were more of a. You know, higher use restaurant, I guess I'll call it. But if you've ever been in that back room now, there's really not even a commercial kitchen back there. It's really just a stove and a stove top and, you know, it's not really a commercial kitchen. Regardless, he's getting rid of that. So he's repurposing. So, um, looking at water usage, the staff, I am recommending that he be charged two sewer units. His usage is lower than some, for example, a lot of residential uses that have a number of children. In their household. We use six thousand gallons as an average. If someone says, what's your average water bill for residential? We usually say six thousand gallons. He's using about nine or ten thousand gallons a month. And so we're suggesting two sewer units with a stipulation that if a restaurant or higher use ever went in that building. That we would look at that, we would revisit that. And the council does have authority. In fact, you're the only ones that have authority. That can, can set a sewer rate based on each individual application. And that's in our code. So I'm asking the council to look at this and make a recommendation. You know, you could say, no, let's just stick with it. His is an unusual building because when you look at the other multiple use buildings. That don't have residential, because you, the, with residential, that's a set fee. We don't, first of all, we don't have a lot of multiple use with no residential in it. We have a couple, for example, the Chrome Works, the, the clock shop. And the little boutique in front. So they get two sewer units because there's just two businesses and they use about the same amount of water. So, um, our recommendation for this application only is two sewer units per month.
I think that sounds fair with the option that we have to go back if you have.
Right. I, I put the motion in there. So, yeah, yeah.
All right, how do you feel about that? Uh, Joel, Justin, you're good?
Okay.
Yeah, no problem, man.
All right, I think we're all on the same page. Uh, do you need a vote on this or?
Yeah, I think we, I think we should.
All right.
I have the motion, uh, recommended language, so it also says we will revisit.
Okay.
So it's, it's understated.
All right, great.
You want me to, I'll do it. I move to approve to charge three nine zero Broadway LLC. Two sewer units for the building located on. South Broadway Street. This decision will be revisited if a restaurant or like business becomes an occupant of the building.
Okay, so I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, two on the second. So I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? We are at the next citizen and community group comment. Do I have anybody on? The chat? Okay, great. Um, next I have the mayor council reports and comments. So I will start off, Jerry, with you tonight.
Um, nothing really from me. Um, I, oh, I will say I did attend the school board meeting. It was, um, it had moved to a Wednesday night. So that was a little bit different. Normally it needs the second. The second. Tuesday, Thursday of every month. So they went and rescheduled it. I think it was because of the game and dance and some other factors. Uh, let me see here, let me go back to my notes and I'll try to be brief since we've spent a long evening. Um, I at first just want to say that if anybody, there's so much information that's given at the school board meetings. That I would encourage people to go online and watch the YouTube videos of the meetings. Um, this last one was about two and a half hours long. They always go over budget, they go over finances, they go over IT, it's the whole gamut. And this time they had all the building principals there giving their own special report. So. It was fairly lengthy. Uh, they went over their five year plan. They're in year three of their five year plan and. Doing pretty good on that. Um, but I'll address the two big. Kind of challenges or hot button issues. So the first challenge is. That the school district definitely needs substitutes. Um, they are having a shortage of teachers and that's just. That's statewide. They, the expect, let me say. Expectations, I guess, job requirements would be a better. Raising for it. Um, used to be you needed a bachelor's degree at least in order to get on and, and substitute. They've since taken that requirement away and you no longer need that. They are just really needing people in there that care. And want to fill, fill those needs and, um, so. Just putting that out there for the community. If you are looking to, you know, help out our school district, they need. Substitute teachers, parent educators. Uh, the next big item, again, don't shoot the messenger. I'm just here to report. Uh, it was mentioned, it was talked about, I believe, um. Ryan Carpenter, he was the one that addressed this. The first, starting the first week in November. The CDC will be reviewing the Pfizer vaccine for use of ages five to eleven years old. They believe they will. Post the review of this. They're, they're thinking about the second, second week of November, Pfizer will be an emergency youth authorization for five and eleven. Not mandated, but still under emergency youth authorization. Superintendent Carpenter went on to say that the Estacada School District has no authority on that being mandated. They will be, it will be up to the governor. Um, that's all decided by the governor, not the school district. He did go on to say that the Estacada School District feels. That it won't be mandated at this time while it will still be emergency use authorization. But once it, if and when it becomes approved, parents will need to pay close attention to what that's going to look like. For their kiddos in school. And he also wanted to mention that if there are anxious parents out there. Much like the teachers and staff that were required to have vaccines this year, um, they're. They had the exemption options as well, religious or medical. He sees that happening for children too, that there will be those options in place. So again. I'm the messenger of this news. It is definitely a hot button issue. Topic. So, um, that, that was the, that was the biggie I got out of that meeting. But again, a two and a half hour. School board meeting, I encourage people to watch the YouTube video on that. I wouldn't be here all night if I went over every aspect of it. Other than that, thank you guys so much for the packet and, well, he left, but. Great presentation and thanks everybody for attending and. Have a safe drive home and a blessed recall evening.
Thank you. Uh, Justin?
Yeah, I got my daughter in the background. So if you hear her, I, I apologize. Appreciate everybody's time tonight. Uh, great presentation, a lot of information in there. Really appreciate it all. I don't have anything else, but just thank you guys. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Justin. Uh, Paul?
Uh, not much else from the library. I think Connie covered things really well on that. I do want to say though, that, that Bookmobile is more than just a bookmobile. It's going to be pretty high tech. So very excited to see what they come up with. Uh, for that. And then I just wanted to say thanks to staff, that planning workshop that we had. I, I felt really is, is doing great to equip us for the housing needs analysis talk that we're going to be going through as well too. That was very helpful and, and, uh, definitely feel more empowered from that. So. Thanks to staff and Taylor for that.
Um, yeah, uh, the last two, so the, that, those workshops and then, uh, tonight with Matt. Was really, really informative for me because I feel like I, I lack a lot of, uh, I lack a lot of knowledge when it comes to, um. That stuff. And I, I really did enjoy the, um, the workshop. Getting, I, I learned a lot from John, I think is what his name was. Um, and then of course, again, tonight from Matt, um, you know, it's a lot, a lot of information. Trying to retain it all, um, with everything that goes on in life, but, um, you know, it's, it's really good info and, uh. And you know, I really do feel like I learned a lot and thank you guys and thanks Taylor. Oh man, she's, she's a dynamo. I'm glad we got her. But so with all that out of the way, I want to address misinformation that's being spread. So I want to address the, there's misinformation that we're going to be raising water bills $450 a year. And that's, none of those decisions have been made as far as the water treatment plant goes. We will be doing anything and everything we can to reduce that cost by finding funding elsewhere. You know, again, we're still trying to figure out if we can spend this almost $1 million we got awarded on that, you know, towards that 17 to 23 million dollar project. But you know, just be careful on the information that's being spread and I'm talking to the community right now. You know, if you have questions, city staff is amazing, you know, it might take them a minute, but you know, call, email with questions. They'll, they'll answer you the best that they can. But it's this fear that is going around with this misinformation that's being spread that it's, it's really not helping with the division that's already there in our community. So just be careful with the information that you spread and make sure it's factual based and not, not hearsay or not just an idea that was floated around or you know, just make sure that it's actual information because none of those decisions have been made yet. And like I said, every person on this council, none of us want to raise, you know, water rates $450 a year or $30 a month, whatever it works out to be. We want to try to find funding and we want to put that, you know, put that funding towards this big giant project that's going to cost us millions of dollars. So just like I said, be careful with the information that's being spread. So thank you and thanks everybody for coming. Joel?
My computer's working, so it's, nothing much for me. There was no meeting for, for the funding commission yet, so nothing to report from there. And other than that, thanks guys. Sorry, I'm not as interacting today. I'm pretty sick right now. So I'm just trying to kind of get through that. So thanks you guys.
Good, thank you. All right, it's to me. I was gone last week, so I don't have a lot, but I do have one thing. Go Rangers. They're in the championship, people. This is good, this is good. And you've looked at the people they're going to play. I think we pretty well got this one wrapped up. So I'm really excited. So I wanted to say thank you to them and it was a great game. I watched it via the hotel I was in. Those guys are amazing and it's great to see our kids doing so well. So thank you for that and thank you everyone for coming tonight. And I think the presenters did a great job and I think all of you counselors for doing the job you're meant to do. So thank you. And this meeting is adjourned.